...eighteenth regular meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. We will start with the invocation by Pastor Brian Fink, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, I just want to praise you for who you are and give you the glory that is due your name. I want to thank you for this city council, for these city servants, and Lord, just ask that you'd be with these shepherds, these leaders of our community, give them insight, give them wisdom, provide them everything that they need to make our lives as constituents and citizens better and just a great place to live. Father, I also ask that you would tend to their personal needs as men and women, that you would just tend to whatever's on their minds, whatever's on their hearts, whatever would preoccupy them from serving you. Give them insight and wisdom in all things tonight. This I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. My Pledge of Allegiance is this one. United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Wozniak?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, citizens input. We have two this evening. Gene, you're up first.
My name's Gene Grossclose, and I am here to speak to you just briefly about item six C on your agenda, dedication and confirmation of easements regarding a lot split that's adjacent to the small housing area there, adjacent to the fairgrounds or the craft, arts and crafts fairgrounds. And I would respectfully request, we've had absolutely no opposition to this at any stage that I'm aware of, so I would respectfully request that you suspend the rules and move to third and final reading on that item, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mike? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't quite make out your last name.
Thank you all for listening to me, and I'm kind of in the same boat with him. You know, I've had 20 acres outside. I'm actually in Benton County, and you know, Bella Vista tried to do a land grab about eight years ago, and we had to fight them in court. Well, now all of a suddenly, I find out that the city of Bella Vista's got the jurisdiction over the planet. And so I went and talked to Chris today and had him try to, basically, I've just cut in a third of an acre that's been there since 1998, and I talked to Chris, and the thing about it is that, you know, I don't mind being under Bella Vista's jurisdiction with respect to y'all, it's that it takes six weeks for me to sell my shop. I mean, I've got, I've got people that's wanting to buy my shop and come to find out after talking to Chris that I won't probably be able to close on my shop until at the end of January. And I've got everything I need, you know, I've got the, this right here, and so, I mean, I would ask that you would also approve my land split tonight.
We can't do that.
Is it on the agenda?
What's that?
We can't do that.
It's got to be on the agenda. It's not on?
There's a whole process for that.
See, the whole thing about all that is, is that, you know, when you find out, I just found out that I was even in Bella Vista's planning commission. I had no idea about it. I'm in Benton County, not even in Bella Vista. I talked to Jim about it the other day. And so, you know, when you can't get an answer from anybody on what to do, you know, and so, so how, can I ask you a question? How, how did I even end up in Bella Vista's planning commission?
Well, that's, that's really something, Chris, and I think you can take Mike through.
There, yeah, yeah. Take with it.
Because there is, there is quite a bit of history, and it goes back also to the state legislature.
Yes.
So I probably don't want to drag you all the way through it tonight, but certainly Chris can give you the history and then he, he can step you through.
We talked a couple hours ago, as a matter of fact, and so, you know, I just, like I said, you know, I'm in Benton County, and I just, I don't know, maybe call it naive or what have you, you know what I mean? But, you know, there's a lot of people affected by this shop not closing, not selling, you know what I'm saying? I'm not a builder or anything like that. It's a personal piece of property mine, and so, being the holidays and everything. Well, I would hope that Chris would help me get through it a little faster, like we talked about today. And so, you know, I just, I just think that, you know, I don't, like I said, I don't mind that the fact that Bella Vista has taken without my, I didn't even know.
True.
I didn't have to sign no papers. Like I said, they tried to do a land grab, but we fought them in court, and we won. And so, you know, I don't mind following Bella Vista's rules, I just think that, at the end of the day, that Bella Vista should have more manpower than to take six weeks to get a lot split through.
I don't think it's really manpower, it's more of the process, Chris, if I'm correct. Okay.
The process?
Yep, it's a lengthy process.
I just wanted to state that.
Sure.
And so, I appreciate everybody here listening to me, and I hope everybody here has a really happy holidays this year, and I'll go through Chris, but, you know, I just think that everything's got to change in that right there, because, you know, if I went to buy, buy that house across the street, well, I could close on that Thursday. But a building that's been there for 20 years, three pens, I can't close until the end of January. I mean, it's just, it's got to be, it's got to be, you know, redone, or it's not that long of a deal. Now, like I said, I don't mind that you take my property in your planning commission, but when your planning commission takes six weeks to do a lot split, three pens, I mean, it is, it is an issue. Would you agree?
Well, it's certainly a lengthy process, I agree with you.
I did not, sorry. I'm sorry. It's crazy, it's nice to meet you. I know you're the mayor. I was asking, I wonder if the mayor's there? And so, I mean, don't you agree about that, Mayor?
Yep.
Can I shorten that?
I'm afraid we can't, but Chris can take you through the process, and I want to thank you for coming tonight, and I wish you and your family a very merry Christmas.
Yes, good.
Thank you. Okay. In your packet is the minutes of the meeting of November 27th. Are there any comments, errors, omissions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. Next is the monthly financial report, as I mentioned at the work session a week ago. Because we have advanced the date for this meeting, the sales tax numbers are not in yet, and I will ask Ms. Elston to send them out to you as soon as she's able to compile them upon receipt. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The first order of business this evening is an ordinance. This will be the second reading. Amending Bella Vista Code of Ordinances, section 109-166, accessory buildings, to redefine front plane, to modify the definition of main floor, and to address front plane with respect to curvilinear streets and for other purposes. We had quite a bit of discussion about this in our last meeting and at the work session. We can certainly continue the discussion tonight, or another alternative is to table indefinitely, send it to the planning commission and to Mr. Sunnison and his staff, and have them come back with a concrete proposal for it. So, I put that in front of you, and if you want to have further discussion this evening, then we can do so. Ms. Lloyd?
Yes, I wanted to explain why I brought this forward to start with. When we earlier this year amended this section of the ordinance, my assumption, which always gets you in trouble, was that the front plane line would curve on curvilinear streets parallel to that street. In June, some folks here from Missouri bought a house, made arrangements to buy the lot next door on which to put an accessory structure, went to the building department to talk about that, and found out they then could not build on that adjacent lot because they were on a curvilinear street, as shown in the drawing that I had presented when this ordinance first came forward. So the reason I opened up this, and now can of worms, was to resolve what I thought was in the original ordinance, so that we are not adversely affecting people on curvilinear streets, of which there are probably more than straight streets in Bella Vista. And that was why I brought this forward. I would be very concerned about sending this back to the planning commission. It took us over a year to get the ordinance amended in the first place, and I just think it needs some tweaking, and I don't want to wait another year to give these people their relief.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, no, and it's actually more than just a curvilinear streets. You're also redefining, you know, the front plane of the home, as opposed to where the door is. So, so there's more than just one aspect. I too, when I initially read the proposed ordinance, I don't know when it was, February or March, there were some assumptions that I made that I was not aware of until I started talking to the people and going, no, that's not exactly what that means, but I assumed that they meant something different. Or I would, I would have had more questions then. But I would just say, I would be fully supportive of taking this to the planning commission. I do not think it'll take another year, but I think there are some things that need button, that need to be buttoned up. I said the basis of this ordinance was to limit the size of an accessory structure and also the placement of an accessory structure. And it seemed to have got very complicated, and what has happened is, on those two restrictions, if you start really getting into the ordinance, it becomes much more restrictive than just those two things. And all supportive of 720 square foot maximum backyard or behind the front plane of the house, got it, but there are some other restrictions that I think that we should allow the residents of our city to be able to work within and be able to give them an opportunity to build a reasonable sized accessory structure for their needs. And I said, this becomes very restrictive in a lot of regards when you really start peeling the onion back on it. So, going to the planning commission is, I think, is the right thing to do, and we can all present our proposals there and talk to those people, and they can help work our way through, because what I understand, there are a lot of people there with a lot of qualifications that can really help us think through this.
So would you like to put a motion on the table?
I would. I'd like to make a motion that we table this amendment, you know, until further time, until after we have a chance to talk to the commission.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, and I'd like to say one other thing. If the individual needed to move forward with a building permit, I would believe that Board of Adjustments could hear this case and make an interpretation at that point.
That's true.
And so I think that would probably be their best avenue until the ordinance has been adjusted. And then, you know, when you start making tweaks to ordinances, laymen want to make the simple tweaks, but the actual professionals, such as Chris and his staff, they can look at the second and third order effects that we don't envision at this current time, and so.
Okay, thank you. John?
I, I don't mind kicking it back to the planning commission. I guess I'd prefer that it be done in a, a limited way, you know, just to have them just look at the things that we're concerned about, rather than just wide open, you know.
I don't, I'm not really trying to just, you know, make it like wide open. My, my recommendations are very specific, actually, so. They, they sound complicated, but they're really not.
I think we would want to keep the planning commission, since we're taking a proposed ordinance and giving it to them, there are very specific things in the ordinance that were proposed, and I would, I would imagine that those are the only things that they will address. Chris, does that seem fair?
They can, I can answer that.
Sure.
It's referred to them for study and their opinion. They may, they may say, well, you need to consider something else, too. They, they have that authority, but you are the, you're the legislative body of the city. You determine what you want to do.
Verbal, verbal.
You know, let's, let's not do it indefinitely, let's put a time limit on it to move it along. Here, I can get some information. The law, the law allows you to refer these issues back to the planning commission. It also gives the council the right by majority vote to recall something from the planning commission back to the council. So it could be that if you think it's taking a little too long, or it's gotten out of control, or it's, it's, we're, we're ready to do something, you can always bring it back on a majority vote of the council anytime you get ready. If you set a timetable, of course, the current motion is to table indefinitely and refer it to the planning commission for study, that's the current motion. If that motion were to fail, and you were to move to table for a 90 days, 120 days, however long you think that's giving them enough time, given the fact that they meet once a month, you can refer it to them for a period of time and to bring back a report to you within a period of time. You can do that. So if you want to say, move to table it for 190 days, I'm not trying to put a limit on anything, whatever you want to do. And within that time, to present a report back to the city council of recommendations, be yay, nay, changes, whatever it is, within that period of time, then it would come back on the agenda, whatever date you set, you could do it that way.
Okay.
Would you be amenable to that?
Yeah, yeah, I would. I talked to Chris today. So the next workshop is, is Thursday this week, which is pretty quick, and then the next one after that is on February the first.
Okay.
So if you want to, I'd prefer if we could do February the first, since we're pushing up against the holidays right now.
February council meeting?
Pardon me?
The February council meeting.
Could they give us an answer back that quick?
Due to the holidays, the planning commission's agenda, or I'm sorry, schedule of meetings, the first work session of January, or I'm sorry, of 2018 would be the first of February, just because of the way the calendar falls. That being said, there is a pretty straightforward second Monday of the month that they would meet, because this would be a recommendation, there would be a public hearing on it, and so I would say a 60-day timeframe for it to move through one, maybe two work sessions with the council, and actually be able to publish a public hearing notice for the proposed amendment.
With the commission, not the council.
That's exactly right.
You said council.
Well, commissions and councils, I get confused sometimes. I go to a lot of meetings, where am I? But, long story short, 60 days would, would be a sort of a normal process for a planning commission to have an opportunity to take and discuss it at a meeting, and then for staff to publish the note, their required notices for a public hearing for their next regular meeting.
Okay. Jim? I'm sorry.
One question while he's up there. You said 60 days?
Yes, sir.
60 days from today wouldn't get you two meetings unless you're counting the December one.
Thank you, Margaret. Probably mean 90 days.
90 days with the, with the adjustments in the schedules.
With your scheduling, you're talking about 90 days to get through two meetings in the new year.
That's true.
So another way of saying that would be to table it until the regular March meeting, having referred it to the, to the planning commission and requiring them to present some sort of a report or recommendation by that, by, by March the first.
You are so good with words. You're everything, you're worth it, every penny.
Before you get too far.
Mayor, there, the current motion is table indefinitely, and that motion has been seconded. If Alderman wants to, excuse me, council member wants to withdraw his motion, Mr. Barr would also need to be consent since he seconded to that. Is that what you?
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my?
I think you actually made the motion.
Yes.
You seconded.
Right, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so there's no current motion on the floor. Do you have a new motion you want to make?
Yeah, I'd like to amend that we table.
No, no.
New motion.
Okay, new motion, that motion that we...
What we just said, and if this is, you want to move this way, let me know.
Or table.
Move to table this ordinance until the regular meeting in March, to send this to the Bella Vista Planning Commission for further study, and that they should provide some sort of report and recommendation back to the council by March 1st.
Very well said.
Okay, so we've got a motion, do I have a second?
March 1st will not give them two meetings in the new year. We need our recommendation back by our meeting in March.
Yes.
By the council.
By the fourth Monday in March.
All right. Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to avoid is them handing you a report right before we get ready for the council meeting.
Well, make it some other day.
So you have a chance to look at it.
Not the first March, because their meeting's not till the second Monday, I think.
Have them make the, the work session.
The work session. Work session in March.
Okay.
All right, so then I think, I think what you were trying to tell us is that you were moving to table this proposed ordinance until the regular session in March, referring to the planning commission for a further study and recommendation by the work session in March of the city council.
Which is March 19th.
Got to repeat all that.
Is that what you, was that your motion?
That's it.
That's the solution, Mayor.
Mr. Barr?
Second.
Now some more discussion. Linda?
I did want to point out that the folks from Missouri who brought this to my attention had intended to attend tonight, but they had a conflict and were not able to be here. And in reference to the comment about the BZA, I do believe that the BZA would have no basis on which to grant a waiver on their request.
Okay, anybody else?
I disagree with that, but it's not here nor there. That's their decision. They have, they're independent to make that decision. Their, their decisions go right to court, they don't come back here, so they're independent on that.
Are we ready for a roll call?
Just a second.
Well, it's still disgusting, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could they waiver to Chris's department to get that building built? Ask for a waiver.
No.
Okay.
No, it would require a variance, it would require a variance granted by the, by the Board of Adjustment, that's what they do.
Okay, all right.
So.
Okay, any other comments? All righty.
The question is on the motion to table as presented by Mr. Fowler. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
No.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero, five one, excuse me.
Yep. The next is an ordinance vacating a portion of the Castor Lane right-of-way and for other purposes. If you remember, Mr. Kelly received a letter from CCI, has since then reviewed it, gone through the law, and finds that they're probably correct. Do you want to take a stretch?
There, this was a partial vacation, or what state law would call a partial abandonment of certain right-of-way in the city. The statute that permits us to do that says that when interested property owners, when property owners and others directly interested, basically come to the city and make the request, then the council has the authority to do it. That would include utilities and easement holders, and as you all know, this, as is most Bella Vista, and all of it, but most Bella Vista, CCI retains certain easements across these properties and thus are directly interested in terms, as I interpret that state statute, I think it's pretty clear, and so therefore they have indicated they are not consenting to this, and so they object to it, and therefore I don't think we have the authority to do that until they were to sign on to an application, basically. So my recommendation based on that is that you all table this indefinitely.
Okay, may I have a motion to table indefinitely?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I have a question. Would they, if, if they would request to vacate the right-of-way, could they not dedicate an easement?
Well, I, the statute basically requires all the stakeholders to be in agreement. And so certainly if they all could get together and come to us with something, then we probably could do something. But they're not all in agreement, so therefore that's just not within the realm.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll go for vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. Item C is an ordinance accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on parcel 18-10300-002, 1991 Forest Hills Boulevard and for other purposes. That is the first reading. Are there any comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll. All right. Councilmember Barr?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Third and final reading, accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on parcel 18-10300-002, 1991 Forest Hill Boulevard and for other purposes. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next is an ordinance amending, ordinance number 2014-19, establishing a policy for a drug-free workplace to address issues related to medical marijuana, and to amend the Bella Vista Code of Ordinances to codify the policy and for other purposes. At the work session, there were some questions raised. I went back and spoke to Mrs. Cruz, our HR director, who put together a clarification statement that I sent to all of you. I think it speaks for itself. Are there any questions about that at all? I have the, the email here, in case you haven't been able to read it. Okay, that was the first reading. In order to get this in place, medical marijuana, I think, is on target now for February. So I would like to move to third and final, if I can have a motion to do that, to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. Item E is an ordinance.
You have to move to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I heard reading. I need to read.
Sorry about that. So, this is third and final, amending ordinance number 2014-19, establishing a policy for a drug-free workplace to address issues related to medical marijuana, to amend the Bella Vista Code of Ordinances, to codify the policy and for other purposes. Are there, are there any further discussions at all about this?
No.
I command approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Is that a motion to approve? Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Now?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with the Bella Vista Animal Shelter, Inc., in the amount of thirty thousand per year, plus one hundred per dog and fifty dollars per cat for the calendar year twenty eighteen and for other purposes. This is the first reading. This is an increase of a thousand dollars per month from the previous budget. And, uh, I might add that in this particular agreement, the city will also have the right at its own expense to conduct an audit. Are there any thoughts, questions?
No. Um, th- this is part of the total eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollar budget, correct? It's in the police department?
Yes.
Budget?
It's in the police department.
Right.
Anything else? All righty. I'd like to move this to third and final as well, so that the shelter has continuity of payments going into the new year. So a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll vote on the motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. Excuse me. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. Third and final reading, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with the Bella Vista Animal Shelter, Inc., in the amount of thirty thousand per year, plus one hundred dollars per dog and fifty dollars per cat fees for the calendar year twenty eighteen and for other purposes. That was the third and final. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
The final ordinance for this evening is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing an agreement with Precision Service and Sales, Inc. of Springdale, Arkansas, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand for repairs to a road grader for the street department. Um, the grader is currently under repair and the price keeps going up, and it has now exceeded twenty thousand dollars. Mr. Button doesn't believe it'll, uh, go beyond thirty. And so we have to bring it to you for your approval this evening. Is there any questions, thoughts?
Is it money in the budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
What year is this grader?
Uh, it's not that old. I think it's about five years old, Frank. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah, we got it about five years ago, but I'm not sure it was brand new then, so I don't recall the exact age of it, to tell you the truth.
The only thing that I would say is, you know, and sometimes with this piece of equipment, you spend thirty thousand dollars on it, then it breaks again, and you're out, more money, so.
No, I think we'll be okay with the grader. We do have an old truck with something like that, which we'll have to address probably in the twenty nineteen budget.
Don't, don't throw away the truck, I know.
Paint it for the front of flowers, huh?
We'll just paint it a couple hours.
Is there any further discussion?
Make the motion to approve?
Second.
No, no, no. I need a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
I make the motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
All right. On the motion to move to third and final, councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. Third and final, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing an agreement with Precision Service and Sales, Inc. of Springdale, Arkansas, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for repairs to a road grader for the street department. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Councilmember Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thanks. We move into the world of resolutions, the first of which is authorizing budgetary funding transfers between departments in the twenty seventeen annuals, the city budget. For those of you that may not be familiar with this, the law states that we cannot move monies between departments without council approval. And at the end of the year, this is more of a housekeeping item, which will allow us to move any monies that we are needed between departments so that we can balance the books at the end of the year. I can tell you that at the current time, it doesn't look as if we will have to invoke this, but I would like to have it in my hip pocket just in case. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay.
It is recognized that we wouldn't use it for anything that's not already approved in the budget, right?
That is correct. Absolutely. Good question. Anything else? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Barr?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Carver LLC to provide on-call engineering services and for other purposes. This, too, is a annual housekeeping item that we do at this time of year, getting ready for on-call engineering for the twenty eighteen. The price this year is twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and it is in the approved twenty eighteen budget. Are there any questions at all?
That's the same amount as it was last year, isn't it?
No, it's gone up slightly.
Has it gone up a little bit? Did, did we use all the contract this year?
No, very close. It's usually quite close.
Okay.
Anything else? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an agreement with Signal Systems Management to provide traffic signal monitoring services and for other purposes. This is remote troubleshooting, plus also the ability to remotely change the timing on the traffic lights on seventy-one. So, for example, when the craft fair is about to happen, they'll be able to change that for us without actually coming on site. The price is twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. It is in Mr. Sonnison's twenty eighteen approved budget. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but that sounds a pretty reasonable price to me. I don't know anything about that, but to monitor those lights for a whole entire year? That's, that's really, really great.
Good. Okay. Anybody else? All righty. I would entertain a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Roll, please. All right.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor to enter into contract amendment with Signal Tech, Inc., to provide traffic signal maintenance services and for other purposes. This, too, is something that we do every, every year about this time. There will be not only the seventy-one, but there's two seventy-nine and three forty, Chris, as well as the, uh, the eleven pedestrian crossings on the trails?
Yes, sir. And Benton County forty.
And Benton County forty, right. And the price tag on this is five thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars for the year, and it is in the twenty eighteen approved budget. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thanks. The next resolution, designating authorizing dispersing officers and municipal depository board for the city of Bella Vista for calendar year twenty eighteen. In your packet, the names for those who can sign dispersments, as well as myself and the finance director. There's the mayor pro tem, there's the city clerk, Wayne Jirtson, our HR director, Melissa Cruz, and councilmember Jim Wozniak. For the municipal depository board, it's myself, Ms. Elston, and Alderman, excuse me, uh, councilmember Fowler. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Second.
All right. Excuse me. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thanks. The next is a resolution, accepting a grant from the Walton Family Foundation for a tree planting initiative, making budget adjustments to account for said revenue and expenditures and for other purposes. As was mentioned at the work session, this has actually taken a bit of a different turn. Instead of the money coming to the city, the, um, the family foundation will be giving it to the Bella Vista Foundation, who will actually pay the, uh, the contractors direct. Therefore, staff is requesting that this item be tabled indefinitely. Is there any discussion at all? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Whoop, okay.
All right. So now there's a motion to approve the resolution on the table. Is there a second? So mayor, that motion dies.
Okay.
Now you need to entertain a motion to table indefinitely.
Okay. Now I'd entertain a motion to table indefinitely.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Question is on the motion to table.
Right.
Yep. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, expressing the willingness of the city of Bella Vista to utilize federal aid surface transportation block grant program, attributable STBGA-a funds for right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation for the Mercy Way Bridge and Corridor Project and for other purposes. In your packet, and I also sent it to you ahead of time, was the grant information form that we have just newly developed. Jim, I want to thank you again for putting that in motion. I think everybody has found it to be very helpful. Chris is here. He's willing to answer any questions that you may have as a result of the grant. It, uh, the estimated start date, Chris, is January the first, twenty nineteen. Estimated end is at the thirty-first, and the grant dollar amount is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, a hun- and one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Anything else to add?
Just briefly, this is a highly conceptual cost estimate of what it would take to relocate utilities and acquire right-of-way for the Mercy Bridge project. Uh, the funds are, and I are still finalizing a cross-section for that bridge at the moment. Uh, we are looking at expanding on the south side of the existing bridge in order to facilitate the designs that we're looking at. There's still a lot to work at, but, uh, our engineers at Burns McDonald gave me this, the match, I'm sorry, the grant dollar amount is about eighty percent of the total cost that, uh, of the spreadsheet that you guys have in your packet today. Total for the project would be about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh, the city, in part, matching for this grant, would, uh, need to budget thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in order to match the funds that were, uh, if awarded, provided to us as a city.
Okay. So at this point, it's really just expressing the willingness? Right. Okay. Are there any questions for Chris? Comments? Already seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Before we move on that one, can I ask Chris one question?
Certainly, sir.
Chances of getting the grant? Do we have any feel?
There is a limited amount of funds that, uh, goes around at the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Regional Planning, Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning. Uh, there is currently a queue of about, I must say, about ten to twelve projects that, um, over time, each city has a good shot at getting their chance at the piece of the pie. For us, I think this is a good one to, to go after.
It's our turn.
Uh, well, not only is it our turn, but, um, because of the, the current contract we have in place with Burns McDonald, this project has a better-than-average chance, uh, simply because it's been awarded. We want to see it get built. And there are phases to this funding that it takes. Uh, obviously, construction is going to be the big dollar item. And other projects in other cities that have been awarded funds from this pot of money that regional planning administers are in that construction phase. So we're, we're lining up in, in our, with our turn.
Good.
When will we know?
The application deadline is January seventeenth. There's usually about a two-to-three-month turnaround on, on award, uh, so that we should know something springtime. Uh, is there a swipe?
April, May. All things being equal. Any more questions? Okay.
Okay. Time for a vote. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
The last resolution of the evening is recognizing the opioid epidemic epidemic in the United States of America and in Arkansas and to engage in litigation as a member of the Municipal League Defense Program, MLD, P against these, uh, those entities and people responsible for this societal crisis. This popped up late last week. Mr. Kelly and I, um, had a call from Mark Hayes down at the Municipal League, and he mentioned that the Municipal League is one of the three risk pools in Arkansas that has joined this case. And they are trying to get as many cities as possible to join. At the moment, um, or as of our conversation last week, he said there were approximately twenty-five cities. In our immediate area, Springdale and Rogers have signed up. Mr. Kelly and I took some time to go over it, actually, Mr. Kelly did, and, um, at the end of the day, there is no cost, and that's laid out in the engagement letter, and the risk is low, and we may even see some dollars come back. I can tell you that in speaking with, um, Chief Graves in twenty nineteen, we are setting up a narcotics officer primarily because of the opioid. We do have a problem here, same as everybody else has a problem with this, and so we are already incurring costs. And Chief Sims, I think when I look at some of your ambulance runs, it seems that the opioids are becoming more and more prevalent. So we need to address this, and this is just one of the ways that the AML is suggesting that we do it. Counselor, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, it, in terms of risk to the city, I see really none. Uh, it doesn't cost anything. This, this, uh, the Municipal League is acting as one set of attorneys. There are others, uh, as you saw in the documentation. Three different law firms also coordinating with AML. Uh, you need to understand, this is, there are, there are many lit- lawsuits related to this going on around the country that are managing to get consolidated into federal multi-gest- dirt, multi-district, uh, litigation. Multi-jurisdictional litigation. And, uh, and so Arkansas is willing to become a part of that, and of course, then that involves, uh, the constituent local governments becoming involved in it. And so, uh, that's what they're asking here. The only thing I can say that the city might be required to do is gather some data, uh, which probably would not be that hard to do, and probably we already have. So, um, that's what this is about. There is an engagement letter. Since there is no cost to the city, there's really no issue about procurement or any sorts of things. Um, it is, uh, as I said, the, if there is a recovery or a settlement in this, the attorneys, uh, collectively, uh, I believe it's twenty-five percent, would go into the, to the attorney pay pool. The rest gets divided up among whomever is involved in the lawsuit, in, in whatever way it ends up being determined in the litigation. So, um, it's there for your consideration. I can tell you, as your city prosecutor, uh, of course, I only handle the misdemeanor cases, and I said this to the first group we had in here, the Citizen, Citizen Police Academy we had here a month or so ago. The number of drunk-driving cases that are actual prescription drug cases, not alcohol cases, uh, has increased dramatically since I started prosecuting over the last nineteen or twenty years. It is unbelievable, the amount of people who you walk by on the street who are taking, not illegally taking, but legitimately taking prescription narcotic medication. Quite close to half.
Yeah, if I may, um, I did two police ride-alongs when I decided to run for council, and a full, I think, six hours of an eight-hour shift with one of the officers was spent, uh, dealing with a gentleman who had a ninety-day prescription of, what was it, oxycodone, um, because he was seeing people. And so it was, that's six hours of an eight-hour shift, and basically every time you went to this, uh, person's residence, you were talking to police officers. So, you know, there's, there's definitely expense associated with this.
So just, you know, the lawsuit is against the, the manufacturers of the drugs. That's the theory. The, the, these litigation, uh, theory is basically they are, they are going after the manufacturers in some form of negligence, uh, products liability matter, uh, products liability manner, to hold them, uh, liable for the damage it's created and, and the expense it creates to governments by responding in police and ambulance and, and all that. That's the legal theory.
Thank you. Any questions or thoughts? This is a very serious topic, unfortunately. Okay, hearing none, I would accept, um, a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Abstain.
Lloyd?
Yes.
It passes five votes, four, and one abstention.
Okay, thank you.